Welcome to the twenty-fourth meeting of the liquor commission. Please turn off your cell phones as to not interfere with the tape recordings of these proceedings. And when addressing the commission, please remember to state and spell your name clearly and speak into the microphone. Want to thank Chair Hong for joining us remotely so we can have forum and have our hearing today.
But before you go on, I'll confirm with Corp Counsel, Chair Hong is supposed to announce who else is in.
Yes, um, so Chair, Chair Hong, just make sure that your video is always on. You announce your name before speaking and also please confirm that there's no one else in the room.
Okay, I affirm that there's no one else in the room with me, although there are some dogs upstairs, you may hear some barking.
Okay, thank you.
Video is frozen or it's delayed.
There we go.
Oh, there. Thanks, Chair. See. We'll go into the public hearings. Okay, there, we don't have any minutes to approve, so we will go into the public hearing. If there is anyone present who wishes to provide testimony on agenda items numbers four through thirteen, you may do so now or wait until the agenda item is called. Seeing none, we'll go to agenda item number one, application number two, three dash zero, one, one, three, four, Ohana Holly Liquor LLC.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners, Terry Lee, attorney for the applicant. To my right is Chris Fulu, who is the operations manager for the applicant. Let me start off by saying I apologize for my casual attire. I don't really have a good excuse. I just forgot about the hearing this afternoon when I left my, my home this morning, so I don't normally show up so casually dressed. You know, there's been, uh, well, let me, let me leave it to the commission to see if there's any particular questions that you have. Otherwise, I, I have a very short presentation I'd like to make to address some of the issues that I think you're, you may be concerned about, particularly the investigator's supplemental report regarding the mailing and the calculation of the number of registered owners and so on. Benson Kim, who is the consultant we engaged, is here to address any discrepancies and questions, but he, you know, and I'll let him address the commission if, if it's your pleasure.
Commissioner, are you on any questions initially?
Well, I think also it's matter, this matter might be continued due to the, the mailing issues. And if you wanted to present your arguments now or just hold it off to the next hearing.
If I could get something on the record real, really quickly and then I will step back. So for the record, this was continued from the January second meeting, public hearing kept open to permit commission staff to investigate the affidavit, a mailing issue and to tabulate protests that were submitted. At this time, you do have a copy of the supplemental licensing investigative report that provides information in terms of the protests that were filed. I can read that into the record or we can do that later or at a subsequent meeting. I will have to report that based upon the conclusions and the supplemental licensing investigative report that applicant does not meet statutory requirements for the submission of this application due to the the issue involving the affidavit of mailing. So that's the little spiel that I needed to get onto the record. I can go through the, the protest information, but I need not do so at this time. So after Attorney Lee concludes his presentation, then I'll put on the record what some of the options that may be available to the commission in this situation.
Yeah, maybe this sincerely, please proceed.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr., we, we will be filing a corrected affidavit of mailing to, to meet statutory requirements. I suspect that it will be filed by tomorrow. As far as the protests, we have been provided a copy of the written protests and the signatures. There's about forty-one of the residents of a particular condominium project that signed it. And the chief complains with noise, not surprisingly. And I've spoken to my client, they understand the concern. And they're reaching out to those community members and property owners. So actually, the continuance probably is a good thing to give us a little more time to talk to them. Make, you know, make sure we're addressing their concerns, but we are prepared to have certain conditions imposed on the license to address those, those concerns.
So. For continuance.
I think what you need to do is see if there's anyone in the audience that needs to.
Do the book of that. Okay.
Yeah.
If there is anyone in the audience who would like to testify either for or against this application, please step forward. Seeing none.
Okay, so with, with respect to Attorney Lee's representation that a corrected affidavit of mailing is going to be filed hopefully tomorrow in order to meet statutory requirements. The commission should entertain a motion to leave the public hearing open and continue to two weeks. So that will be the January thirtieth meeting. You need to continue to a date, a date certain and leave the public hearing open.
So the motion is to, I'm sending a motion to continue the matter for two weeks to January thirtieth, so and the public hearings open.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue the public hearing for her two weeks and keep the public hearing open. Do I have any days or reservations? Question? No, hearing none. I also vote aye. It's been continued. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call agenda item number two, application number two, four, dash, zero, one, seven, eight, four, for Torishin Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon, I'm Asami Williams on behalf of Torishin Hawaii LLC. We've had a chance to review the investigative report and have no changes to make.
Assistant Administrator Hirai.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Sakamoto. This application, as you see, zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November twenty-first preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Chair Hong prior to the public hearing.
There's anyone in the audience who would like to testify either for or against this application, please step forward. Okay, seeing none, commissioners.
None.
None.
A motion to approve. Application number two, four, zero, one, seven, four, eight, four.
It's been, okay, accused, it's been moved and seconded to approve application number two, four, dash, zero, one, seven, eight, four. Do you have any, oh, any days or reservations?
None.
Seeing nine, I also vote aye, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number three, application number two, four, dash, zero, one, eight, nine, six. Sasaya USA Inc.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is Officer and Director Ms. Akane Kawano. I did provide to the commission the updated menu. The menus has pretty much an extensive meal selection. And if you look on page one, as well as towards the back of the menu, we have quite a bit of spaghetti, processed sandwiches, and a lot of different food items and choices. These are all food items that we make there in the premise exclusively served there. So we just wanted to correct and contradict the investigative report with their concern that it was just going to be a small little dessert place, but it's a Japanese cafe.
Thank you. Assistant Administrator Hirai.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Sakamoto. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November twenty-first preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Chair Hong prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience would like to testify either for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners.
Oh, I, so, I mean, although you have other properties there, I'm, I'm not privy to seeing the extensive menu, but uh, so it's obviously beyond just tea and uh, gelato. Is that correct?
My commissioners, um, I did provide the updated menu, maybe a couple of months ago. I'm not sure. Commissioner Hong, you have a copy of that in your packet, but I did also provide it right now to Commissioner Huen and Commissioner Sakamoto.
Okay.
And we will be, um, this menu and the selection will continue in the future as well. We might change a few things here and there, but the variety will stay in to pretty much the same.
All right, so we just misread the intent as a, just a dessert place. It's a full meal.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
A motion to approve application number two, four, zero, one, eight, nine, six.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve application number two, four, dash, zero, one, eight, nine, six. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye. The application is approved. We will move to special license applications, agenda item number four. Application numbers two, five, dash, zero, one, three, nine, one, dash, one, and two, five, dash, zero, one, three, nine, one, dash, two, Village Events LLC.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Ann Deng, ANH D A N G on behalf of Village Events LLC.
Want to walk us through?
Yes, so this will be a private company holiday party. We actually, um, this will be the same party that we apply for it for the previous month, but we just, we're just changing the dates of it. So it will be a Friday night and a Sunday night at Pritch where we normally host our night market, but this will be a private event, so only the invitees or the invited guests and their families.
And then you're gonna have minors there as well.
Yes, we will still be implementing metal barricades. We'll have HPD on site with private security and with spending those that are twenty-one and over.
So your company has like two thousand people for their Christmas party is like, but.
Well, it's, um, we're, we're expecting about five hundred, but each, um, each a, of invited attendee can bring their families as well.
I see. Got it.
The previous submission was approved?
Yes.
Right, thank you. Okay, motion to approve application numbers two, five, zero, one, three, nine, one, dash, one, and two, five, zero, one, three, nine, one, dash, two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application numbers two, five, dash, zero, one, three, nine, one, dash, one, and two, five, dash, zero, one, three, nine, one, dash, two. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, application is approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We will move to the preliminary hearings. We'll go to transfer application number two, four, dash, zero, two, one, five, four. Teiga eighty-eight LLC.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair Hong and members of the commission, Neo Gotta appearing on behalf of Bottega eighty-eight LLC. Doing business as Jovetti. Appearing with me is Jennifer Akiochi, manager. We have no changes to the investigative report. Applicant has been operating on a temporary license with no problems. Applicant would also like to thank the commission and investigator Sato for working on this application to minimize the time that she's on special applications.
Commissioners.
Our motion to approve transfer application number two, four, dash, zero, two, one, five, four.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve transfer application number two, four, dash, zero, two, one, five, four, any names or reservations? Yep, seeing nine, I also vote aye, application is approved. Thank you very much.
I would like to note that we're reevaluating the policies on the special applications for people that have two temporary applications, so that'll be coming up at the end of the hearings.
Thank you.
Go to carrying license application, calling agenda item number six, application number two, five, dash, zero, one, four, zero, six.
Good afternoon, Chair Hong. Commissioners Adam Miller appearing on behalf of the applicant. We have reviewed the investigative report. This applicant is also on its second temporary license, which we expect to likely run out before approval of its permanent applications, but let's hang be in asking to cater.
Commissioners, questions?
No questions.
No questions.
No, one question. Okay, so when will the second temp expire?
I believe in April. April.
And, and what, are you waiting for something from us to move forward or are we waiting for something from you?
Where, where are we in the status of the application? It's Chair Hong's question. Is, is it something on, on our side that we need to get back to you and do, or is it the, that you need to get back to us?
Uh, I believe our application is complete where we are, the last I spoke to the investigator on the matter, we are nine applications behind in the queue.
Okay, great. We're, we're, we'll be asking this question quite a bit.
Sorry, the supervising investigator licensing to provide comment.
Yeah.
Supervising investigator Daniel Sato checked in with the investigator regarding this application for his permanent on that investigator has eleven currently ahead. So we're gonna try to take a look as far as how I can reallocate the resources to see where we, where we can push it upward.
Okay, because you said April is when it's gonna expire the, the second term.
Yeah, I'm, you know, pretty sure it's April.
Understanding is April eleventh.
Mr. Sato, you think we can up to the finish line by then?
We will try. Uh, I would have to take a look at all the other ones currently ahead of that in, in that order for everyone's want to be, to be fair.
Sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, one, four, zero, six.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve application number two, five, dash, zero, one, four, zero, six. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the application is approved. Thank you very much. We'll do our best. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Moving to request agenda item number seven, request number two, three, dash, zero, one, eight, four, six, Craft Beer Company LLC.
Good day, Commissioners.
Can you state your name for the?
My name is Thomas Klosor. I'm one of the members at Craft Beer Company.
Commissioners, questions?
Just for the record, can you spell your name for the record, please?
Thomas, we know H T O M A S, last name Klosor, K L O O S T E R V O E R.
Thank you.
Okay, and so this request, you're now fine and all of your membership, ownership is complete.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, one, eight, four, six.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve request number two, three, dash, zero, one, eight, four, six. Any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the request is approved.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Move to agenda item number eight, request number two, four, dash, zero, one, nine, six, zero, Maui Brewing Waikiki LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman of the Commission, Mr. Ry Robert Uwoka on behalf of Maui Brewing Waikiki. Presenting my right, Mr. Sean Shelton. He is the general manager, first name S H A W N, last name S H E L T O N. This is for a request for a permanent increase for the Cirque du Soleil at the Waikiki Beach Colmar, includes the lobby level, the theater, and the ground floor. We did have a previously approved, reduct, permanent reduction of permits of Mal River. That was approved on December twentieth, twenty twenty-four.
Commissioners.
One more thing I want to mention, investigators' report mentions about the notification of the neighborhood board. We did do that on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we did submit the proof of mailing to the commission.
I have no questions.
No questions.
Our motion to approve request number two, four, zero, one, nine, six, zero.
Second.
They moved a second to approve request number two, four, dash, zero, one, nine, six, zero, any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also thought I the request is approved. Thank you so much. Moving on to other business, we have agenda item number nine, request number two, five, dash, zero, one, three, seven, four. Robert Leo class choir on behalf of MVW of Hawaii in DBA Barret Vacations Club Waikiki.
Good afternoon, Robert Uwoka on behalf of Marriott Vacation Club Waikiki. Presenting to my right, Ms. Christina Gabriel, general manager. A first name C H R I S T I N A, last name G A B R I E L. This is, this is a similar request on Marriott's behalf as the Hilton request we had last week. We just want to be able to proceed with the hotel class liquor license. This has only timeshare sales and regular hotel sales. Um, this application was filed in December twenty twenty-three, and we just request for permission to proceed at this point with the hotel liquor license application, class law.
Uh, could, could you say that date again? You, tw- December of twenty twenty-three and no action has been taken. You're just waiting for us to allow you to file.
Uh, if this was triggered because the investigator asked me about proceeding with the condominium hotel license, and that was in December. So that's, of December of twenty twenty-four, a year later.
Oh, okay, got it.
Now we just want to move it forward.
Okay.
To proceed with the hotel license, hotel license application.
Okay.
Commissioners.
Yeah, I know, I'm fine. I mean, the caveat is we're not approving anything, just the request to move forward. That, that's fine.
Yeah. Our motion to approve request number two, five, dash, zero, one, three, seven, four.
Second.
They moved and seconded to approve request number two, five, dash, zero, one, three, seven, four, any names or reservations? Seeing none, I also vote aye, the request is approved. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number ten. Commission Blade and Timber LLC, DBA Blade and Timber.
Hi, Commissioners. Um, my name is Kelly Ron. I'm the general manager of Blade and Timber. Um, we also have Matt on Zoom for any other questions.
Can you spell your last name?
Are you A N?
How about giving us an update? It's, it's been six months at least since you last came and any?
Um, nothing much has changed. Pretty much the same. We have no incidents. We're still checking guests in and marking them off on wristbands. Um, yeah, no, no incidents.
Is there any changes that you're requesting here today after six-month review?
No changes.
Or proceeding how we have the current conditions is acceptable to you?
Yes.
So I have a. So I have a comment.
Okay.
Ready, uh, so I I have now gone twice to the facility, I found it quite enjoyable. Um, the two drink minimum was, uh, clearly enforced. The barriers were seemingly just left up in the half position the whole time. Uh, Vice Chair Hollander has many more concerns over that than myself personally, but. Um, I believe, i- is it your, um. Policy to always leave them half open, or should they be totally closed down to the floor?
They, um, were required to be a certain feet above, so that's how low we have it. And then sometimes guests will put them up, um, and then we'll put them back down.
All right, and then I found the, um. Supervision. Uh, adequate, uh, but it wasn't like somebody was watching me all the time, and I found it enjoyable.
Yeah.
Activity. Those are just my comments from going twice.
For the record, it's a two drink maximum, yeah.
Right now it's three drink.
Three drink maximum, okay.
With a two drink minimum.
We wish we could enforce a two drink minimum, but just to give some quick data, hi Commissioners, thanks for allowing me to join from Zoom today. Um, we, at our last check in, we were averaging one point zero two drinks per guest. And for the last six months with the new three drink minimum, we are now averaging one point two drinks per guest. So we have had an increase in point one eight drinks per guest on average. This is, um, pretty much in line with our Portland location, which is the most similar in terms of revenue. Uh, and as you know, if we're able to sell a couple of their drinks, it does have a noticeable difference on our revenue, so we just wanted to express gratitude. Um, and hope to just continue doing business as is.
Okay, on a personal basis, I I helped your average. Beyond the minimum, up to the maximum.
I appreciate that, thank you.
This is a clarification, so. The removal of the axe throwing barriers. Then I heard something about. Patrons raising the height and you having to lower it. Okay, so what type of risk or? Danger issues may be involved when they. Pull around with the targets.
So, um, nothing really, because the nets are right outside of the lanes. Um, it's more so, we've never had any axes hit it, um, we've never had. Any real use for it, um, it's kind of like a, it makes people feel safer to have some sort of barrier. Yeah, but, um, I believe guests raise them up so they can see the lane.
Yeah. And you're okay with continuing with the barrier?
Yeah.
Okay.
For what it's worth, it would be our preference to remove it, but we also understand, um, you know, the, the. Pushback probably isn't the right word, but the request to have the barrier, and so with that being said, we're happy to continue with the barrier if that is the preference of the commission.
Commissioner, Chair Hong, you were there, I mean, you have an opinion on that?
Um, yeah, I, I, I would. Be comfortable with removing it, but I was comfortable last time when we had the discussion, it was Vice Chair Hollander that had a much stronger position on. Having the barriers on.
For what?
Were properly agenda for you to be addressing restrictions and conditions on the license, they could come back next week if they wanted. With a specific request, but this is, uh, just a report on six month. Uh, operation, uh, operations. And, um, like, they, they can always come back to request further relief. And we do have the enforcement supervisor in in the room, if you wish to provide information on. What's occurred the past six months.
Acting Supervising Investigator for Enforcement, Glenda Shigoto. Um, during the past six months, we've been numerous inspections, no issues, no complaints, so. Seems okay, you know, like they're enforcing their. Policies.
Great. Any questions?
No, no question.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't need a motion?
No, no action, this is just a report.
Basically, you have a question?
If I, if I may ask a question, I'm sorry if if you're speaking to me, it's challenging sometimes. Um, just curious of if there is a requirement for another six month report, or if this, at this point, if we're just. Um, operating status quo unless we have any additional changes.
Uh, they've not imposed that, uh, an additional six month review at this time.
Sounds good.
So I think at this point, it would be if you would like to come back to the commission to. Have any requests for changes to the conditions, you could do so. But other than that, uh, we don't have it. A condition for another six month review.
Understood, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no adjudications, uh, scheduled. Go to agenda item number eleven, commission discussion on process and procedures outlined in the agenda.
I, I have an item.
You do?
Yes.
Coming along too.
Uh, no, it's just that we had the discussion on the, um, relief for special licenses. And I would like to direct the administration to put that in our policies and procedures. Um, section of our website, so it can be referenced, uh, prior to our next hearing on this topic.
That okay that we could. To gain that. Direction right here?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items for agenda number eleven? Nope. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number twelve, Administrator Weekly Report. Ninety day event schedule, work plan coordinator.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Suttilos Administrator on behalf of the commission. I had the pleasure of meeting with the mayor, the managing director and the deputy managing director. Uh, to speak about operational, about HLC operations. I think, uh, of great importance to you as a, as a body was the fact that. Uh, it's for understanding that the chief of staff is speaking to someone about the possibility of serving the commission.
Okay.
Discussions are ongoing. Um, I think I'd also like to let you know that today. We were joined by two new employees and office assistant as well as a licensed clerk. And, and, and also, uh, you know, we continue to meet as a group. Talk about the, uh, about the lessons and process. And without moving to any questions you have.
Chair Hong.
Uh, I would like to ask on our progress with the data migration.
Commissioner Hong, thank you for bringing up the data migration, that, that is, that is contingent upon obtaining purchasing approval for us to move ahead. Uh, not only that, but also, uh, with the geolocation data, history data. As well as a random, uh, random, randomized assignment of routine inspections. Uh, that's still in process.
Do we have visibility on the contracting approval?
Uh, at this point, it, it resides with the, the, the necessary, necessary documents reside with, with, with purchasing. And we are, we are working with them to try to get that done as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You sure, Ian?
No.
I should, I have no question, thank you. Mr. Kilos. Uh, agenda item number thirteen, commission announcements, any announcements? Seeing none?